MetroLink Station, providing easier access to MetroLink and Amtrak trains.
What we're trying to do is get people out of their personal cars into public transit, safe, secure.
A New Year's resolution that hopefully sticks. Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Both projects were funded by voter-approved Measure Our Funds. And during the last weekend of September was another big transportation story, Carmageddon Two. It was the second time a portion of the 405 freeway shut down to traffic. Gil Reyes filed this report on the shutdown.
Crews finished the job hours ahead of schedule. They demolished the north side of the Mulholland Bridge and cleaned up the mess below on the 405 freeway. All this with enough time left over to pave lanes and fill potholes. Carmageddon Two shut down the 405 freeway for 10 miles again. It came and went just like last year's Carmageddon, splendidly, as most people avoided the freeway during construction.
The media did an incredible effort of getting the word out. And so as a result, it all worked. Karma having too.
But authorities did issue several citations for trespassing during the two-day closure.
A couple of skateboarders and a couple who had just gotten married. They went out there. They were married last night and they went out on the freeway. Not funny, very dangerous, they shouldn't have done it. Not a good way to start a marriage.
But a great way to move forward with a $1 billion freeway improvement project. Carmageddon is one and two just part of it. In this post-apocalypse, after Carmageddon, expect more traffic on the 405 and surrounding areas, as crews rebuild the bridge's north side. Crews must also fill in a 10-mile carpool lane gap. They're trying to build the nation's largest connecting HOV lane between the San Fernando Valley and Orange County. Caltrans officials have no exact completion dates for all this. It's best to check the website often and plan ahead for any possible lane closures. Off the Sepulveda Pass, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
But 2012 wasn't all about cars and new rail projects, it was also about a return back to nature. A new program took Angelenos out of their cars, off their bikes, and onto the LA River in kayaks. Anna Marcos reported on this story back in August.
It's no wild ride through rough river rapids, but the lazy, concrete-lined LA River has become a kayaking mecca for this summer. After a successful pilot test last year, the river is taking on paid kayaking tours this summer, and wannabe kayakers are lining up for tickets.
They opened it up last year, but it sold out in like 10 minutes, so, and it sold out again this time, so I feel very lucky to be here.
Two groups, the Conservation Corps and LA River Expeditions, have launched the wildly successful River Boat Rides.
It's short and sweet. It's no more than about a mile and a half. There's a couple obstacles that we go through, so that takes some time. We also do educational talks along the way.
In 2010, the Environmental Protection Agency declared the entire length of the LA River navigable waters. That qualified it for added protections under the Clean Water Act and helped it compete for more funding dollars. Now there are plans to clean up the river and create more recreational opportunities.
It's pretty exciting that they're talking about rehabbing the river, taking out a lot of concrete, so the native grasses and trees can grow in there, and that will be a home for a lot of birds, they'll nest there.
A little push and the river gains another kayaking convert. But if you want to get in on this boat ride, the best advice is try again next year. 2,000 people already beat you to it this time around. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
While there are no kayaking tours available now, if you'd like to learn more about future tours, you can go to elariverexpeditions.com or paddletheeliver.org. Turning to some sports news in 2012, the Dodgers, after struggling under the ownership of the McCourts, caught a fresh start in the form of new owners. And as Yana Kay reported back in May, owners promised a whole new experience for fans.
The new owners of the Dodgers, Guggenheim Baseball Management, took to the field at Dodger Stadium, hoping to hit a home run with fans and the Los Angeles community.
We want to win on the field. We want the fans to have the best fan experience they've ever had. We want to make sure it's fan-friendly, as well as the fans will be safe.
Right out of the gate, the owners, which include basketball legend and entrepreneur Irvin "Magic" Johnson, announced a new reduced parking price from $15 to $10. And the establishment of a new email address where fans can send suggestions.
The team is a jewel in the city's crown, and an ambassador for Los Angeles across the country and around the world.
Guggenheim Baseball Management bought the LA Dodgers from Frank McCourt for a record $2 billion. The group wants to enhance the ballpark and bring the fan experience into the 21st century.
You'll see me here every night, and you won't have to look for me very far, because I am on the concourse, and the reason I'm on the concourse is every night, and have been my entire career, is to talk to fans, to meet fans, to understand what they like, what they don't like.
President of Guggenheim Baseball Management Stan Kasten said his group wants to focus on what's important to fans, which is the team, the fan experience, and their relationship with the community.
We are marking a renewed interest and sense of hope for not only the coming season, but more importantly, for the coming generations of seasons.
Magic Johnson said that the new owners want to bring pride back to the city and to the Dodger organization.
There's new owners sitting here, there's new direction, there's a new era, and we're moving this franchise forward.
A franchise whose new owners hope to get the entire community rooting for the Dodgers. I'm Yana Kay for LA This Week.
In football news, city leaders and supporters of bringing professional football back to Los Angeles received some unexpected news in September, that AEG, the Unshut's Entertainment Group, which was working with the city to bring an NFL team and a new stadium to the city, was up for sale. The news left many asking, what's the future of the NFL in LA? AEG, which owns Staples Center, the LA Galaxy, and the LA Kings, was also behind Farmers Field, the proposed $1.5 billion football stadium. The mayor assured Angelenos the sale does not change the city's plans to move forward.
I have the commitment of both Mr. Anshutz and Mr. Li Wiki, that that will not impact the effort to bring a football team to Los Angeles.
The city's administrative officer, Miguel Santana, also reassured Angelenos that the deal is a good one, saying the city will be getting a new stadium without one single penny of public subsidy. And just a few weeks later, in early October, reporter Rasha Goell was at the historic signing ceremony, where the mayor and AEG president, Tim Li Wiki, greenlit the construction of the much-anticipated football stadium.
It's official. Just days after the LA City Council's unanimous vote, city leaders and AEG are signing off on the development of Farmers Field, LA's new NFL stadium, as well as the modernization of the LA Convention Center.
This is a once-in-a-lifetime project.
The project includes building a 76,000-seat football stadium alongside Staples Center and LA Live. Plans also include transforming the Gilbert Lindsay Plaza, an area outside the convention center, along with modernizing the 50-year-old convention center.
Right now, we're number 15 in our ability to attract conventions. We will never be a top-five city until we modernize that convention center, until we expand it. This effort will help us do that. It will bring tourism, it will bring people from all over the country and all over the world to LA.
Officials say it's not only about bringing back football. The modernization of the convention center and the building of Farmers Field will help create thousands of jobs for Angelenos.
There'll be 30,000 new jobs that we did not have here before, and we're not taking from anywhere else. These are net new jobs, and they will put people back to work. 40% unemployment among the building trades. This project is a godsend, actually.
It's unknown which NFL team or teams will come to LA.
I believe we're not just going to have an opportunity to get one team, but I think the mayor's right. We're going to have an opportunity to get two teams.
Construction on the stadium and upgrades to the convention center can only go forward if a football team agrees to move to LA. From downtown Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goell for LA This Week.
AEG president, Tim Li Wiki, reassured city leaders that the stadium deal will remain solid, even with the new owner. As for which team or teams will be coming to Los Angeles, that's a decision that has to be approved by National Football League owners, who are scheduled to meet in March. And we end our look back on 2012 with perhaps the city's biggest sports story, the LA Kings' championship win. Cindy San Luis takes us to the Staples Center for the LA Kings Parade.
Go Kings, go! Go Kings, go!
It's been 45 years in the making, so die-hard Los Angeles Kings fans came out in droves to celebrate the franchise's first-ever championship.
I'm really excited. It's a good feeling for them, too. I just feel so proud for them.
Matea Merrick joined an estimated quarter of a million people to give the LA Kings the royal treatment.
We're all here supporting this great, great parade, this great victory of the Kings. Say something.
Hey, I've been waiting since Rogie Vaschan was the goalie to finally see the Kings win it, and this is it.
And the Kings are grateful to their fans for rooting for them throughout the years.
I think it might hit you a bit when you got out there and, you know, you see all the support we've had for 45 years.
There's a lot of people out there, and they deserve it. It's been a long wait.
Just to see the joy in their faces for what they've accomplished in terms of the price they've had to pay, and to see that makes me happy.
The Kings greeted fans as they rode buses and flatbed trucks in a parade through downtown Los Angeles.
Tears of joy when we took it. It was unbelievable. Just, I, it's so hard to believe that we're the Stanley Cup Champions.
And for Sean Tierney, who was at game six of the Stanley Cup Finals, where the LA Kings beat the New Jersey Devils and claimed the championship, this parade was not to be missed.
So what are you expecting to see today?
The cup. That's what we're here to see. It's because it's the cup, we're the champs.
For the first time in Los Angeles history, the Stanley Cup is here, and it's with the King of Kings, the LA Kings.
This is a long time coming, and we want this for you guys.
And for both the LA Kings and their thousands of fans, the wait was well worth it. From the Staples Center, I'm Cindy San Luis for LA This Week.
The LA Kings became the first eighth-seeded team to win the Stanley Cup since the conference-based seedings were introduced in 1994. Well, that's going to do it for this special look back at the year that was. I'm Ellen Chang, and on behalf of everyone here at LA City View Channel 35 and the LA This Week Show, we wish you a prosperous 2013. Thanks for watching, and we hope to see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
I am here to talk about the problem of counterfeiting and piracy. It goes beyond the manufacturer and sale of cheap unauthorized goods. Such crimes impact legitimate businesses, employment, and even public safety. The money a consumer pays for a counterfeit or pirated item may very well be financing even more serious criminal activity, like gang crime. I'm doing everything in my power to protect the citizens of Los Angeles, but I also need your help. Please do not purchase these items. Together, we will combat these illegal practices and make Los Angeles a better and safer city. Thank you.
G'day, Troy McCavon from North Hollywood. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
There are no cards? Sergeant, if we could begin to pick up the cards.
Good morning, welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. We meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. I hope everyone had a happy holiday. Today's date, January 4th, 2013. Mr. Clerk, I believe we do have a quorum. Could you please call a roll?
Hello, con Buscaino, Englander, Garcetti, Weezer, Kretzke, Corian Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Zine, Wesson, 11 members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Englander moves, Buscaino seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Reyes moves, Zine seconds, next.
Mr. President, there have been requests from members to continue items one and eight. It would be continuing item one to February 5, and item eight to January 16.
Without objection. You know what, members, since this is the first time that we're back, our first meeting in 2013, why don't we all rise, pledge to, in fact, why don't we all rise, and I'll have Mr. Buscaino lead us in the flag salute with his special guest?
Ready, right hand over your heart? Eyes on the flag? Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, Rudy.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino, and your young guest, nine years old, will be Rudy, will be 10 in February. And he's a baseball player, and he plays first base and catcher. Why don't we give the young man Rudy a round of applause? Okay, Mr. Clerk, back to work. Where are we?
Mr. President, items two through four are items which public hearings have been held.
Items two through four? Okay, specials, members? Mr. Alacan calls item three. If we could vote on the remaining items, let us open the roll. Wait a second, Madam Clerk, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Garcetti?
Continue till March 12th, number four.
Item four, there's a request to continue it to March 4th, without objection.
March 12th.
March 12th, that'll be the order. So let's vote on the remaining items, let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, next, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, items five through 19 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Do we have cards?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, on which items?
We have cards on items five, six, 10, 11, 12, 14, 15, and 19.
Mr. Labange?
Yeah, on item 16, I just got, if you can lay it on the desk, I got a small technical amendment.
Okay, let's hold item 16, and let's vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations, items called special or public comment.
Okay, why don't we go, Mr. Weezer? It's my understanding that you have a presentation. Are you ready? In fact, before we do that, I would like to introduce, or have the, we have a delegation from the Philippines, and the Philippine Council General is here. Why don't you come up to the podium? If you could help her get there, Sergeant? And if you could have the other two members, you guys go up there too, go. Good morning, congratulations on your new assignment. And why don't you, if you would, present yourself to the city council where you will be working?
Thank you very much, Honorable Wesson, Council President, and the esteemed members of the L.A. City Council. Good morning, everyone. It is my pleasure to thank the City Council of L.A. for the warm welcome with which you receive me. Filipinos have been part of the Los Angeles landscape since the early 1900s. Since then, a number of Filipino enclaves have developed throughout the Southern California region. As decades progressed, the members of the Filipino community who have chosen to make greater Los Angeles area their home showed a trend of gravitating towards these Filipino enclaves. One of the oldest Filipino enclaves in the city of Los Angeles can be found in an area near the West Temple Street and South Alvarado Street intersection called the Historic Filipino Town. It was created by a resolution proposed by City Council member Eric Garcetti on August 2, 2002. According to the 2010 census, Los Angeles is one of the cities in the United States which has the largest Filipino population. There are over 150,000 Filipinos residing in the city of L.A. For us, there is no more, no more meaningful testament to the vigor of the bilateral relations between the Philippines and the United States of America than this massive phenomenon of people-to-people exchange. In view of this, we are looking forward to a more visible contribution of the Filipino community to the fabric of American society. First of all, we want Filipino Americans to become more involved in the American democratic process as registered voters, party members, and community organizers, so that they may have a potent political voice as vibrant supporters of selected officials and policymakers, especially in issue advocacies and programs which will benefit not only our community, but also the mainstream American society. Hopefully, through such involvements, we will someday see our number contribute to the betterment of American society. Furthermore, we would like the Filipino-American community to more visibly contribute to the American cultural melting pot. We call on the multifarious Filipino organizations in Los Angeles to be more active in showcasing the unique beauty and richness of Filipino heritage in mainstream programs and activities that they may add more color to the multihued fibers of the multicultural tapestry of California. Again, I would like to thank the members of the City Council of L.A. for giving me this opportunity to meet with you. Let me assure you of the support of the Philippine Consulate General for your programs and projects, especially those which will further strengthen Philippine-American relations and empower the American people, including the Filipino-American community. Happy New Year, and as we say in Filipino, mabuhay po kayong lahat. Thank you.
Well, Happy New Year to you, and we've got Mr. Garcetti, I think, wanted to say a couple of words, and Mr. Labange to close.
Just very briefly, thank you very much, Mr. President. I wanted to welcome back a great representative of her country, somebody who we very much enjoyed working so closely with, Helen Barber de la Vega. This is really a second home for you, and so we're glad that you were able to pick up some more skills and some more experience, but we're even more excited that you're back here in Los Angeles. You really were part of making history here in 2002, and we look forward to many great days together. So welcome back to the City of Angels.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Labange?
Thank you, Mr. President. Habagahu maga, this is special, special, special. And you mentioned about the contributions of Filipino Americans here, the greatest nurses in Southern California. The Filipinos stepped up greatly when there was such a challenge with not having enough nurses in California. And you're part of this great solution. So I just wanted to state that because I remember many, many times being in hospitals, visiting people, and they were always the great Filipino nurses who were there, among other things. Congratulations. Bacate is a sister city of ours, and we continue that relationship. And it's good to have someone who once was here before because you know the fabric of Los Angeles. And Mr. Garcetti, thank you again for your work in Historic Filipino Town. Hapu da salamat.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Again, thank you, and congratulations. With that said, Mr. Weezer?
Well, good morning, Mr. President, and buenos dias to everyone. Happy New Year, and welcome back to the City Council chambers. And what a great way to start this year by having a renowned actor that is known throughout the world who calls Los Angeles home. And I'm speaking about none other than Jaime Camille. Let's give him a big round of applause. He has joined us today with his wife Heidi, his daughter Elena. And in the entertainment industry, he is the rare quadruple threat. He is a singer, a dancer, an actor, and a much sought-after host. He has taken his acting and musical talents to theater stages from New York's Broadway to top venues in San Francisco and Mexico City. And he has received numerous acting awards along the way. As a singer, he has three platinum albums and performs the soundtrack for his latest show, the Univision telenovela For Ella Soy Eva. This show is the top-rated U.S. Spanish-language telenovela. And for those who know the show, we can honestly say that Jaime Camille is proof that it takes a real man to step into a woman's shoes, right? And not to be outdone, Mundo Fox also has a show that stars Jaime in the show called Los Exitosos Pérez, a show centered around the rough and tumble world of the television news industry, with Jaime again showing his depth as an actor, playing two different characters, including one pretending to be the other. That's pretty difficult. And many of you know Jaime has done a role in Don Fernando Mendola from La Fea Mas Beja, opposite Angelica Valle, who many of you know, we honored here and welcomed her back home from Miami. And her husband, Otto Patron, has joined us here today. Is where was Otto? The omnipresent Otto is here. And the finale for La Fea Mas Beja was one of the most-watched Spanish programs in U.S. history, easily outperforming its U.S. counterpart, Ugly Betty. Jaime has also gained recognition on the big screen, performing in some of the top movies in Latin America such as Alfonso Arauz Zapata and Fernando Califaz Seven Days. Before his success on stage and screen, Jaime started his career in 1993 as a radio commentator. In 1995, he made his small-screen debut as a host in El Show de Jaime Camille. He continued as a host in TV Aztecas Que Noches cita con Jaime Camille, and Televisa's Operación Triunfo. Sounds like he worked for every Spanish-language television station here. When available, he continues hosting duties on this day. I'd compare him to Ryan Seacrest. Oh, I don't know what you think about that, but he certainly is much cooler than Ryan Seacrest here today. Let's just say he is a much sought-after host in Latin America award shows as well as sports shows. But the great thing about this multifaceted international superstar is that he has called downtown home. And that speaks to the transformation and the new residents that we see coming to downtown Los Angeles. As many of you know, 10 years ago, we had about 10,000 people who called downtown home. Today, about 50,000 people call downtown home. And lucky for us, he lives in the great City of Angels, in the heart of the City of Angels. And that's why we want to congratulate Jaime Camille, not only for his success on the screen, as an actor, as a host, but also for being part of this great family we call the Angelino family. Bienvenido Jaime Camille y felicidades.
Better round of applause, everybody, for that right now.
So I'm part of the City of Los Angeles. It's a great pleasure, on behalf of this city council and our mayor of the City of Los Angeles, to present to you this recognition for your outstanding work and for being part of the Los Angeles City family.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer. And is that his family right there on the front? Let's get them all together, get a good shot, that's a pretty shot.
Thank you, thank you very much. Just a pre-words, thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Councilman. What a wonderful honor, thank you. I want to extend my sincere gratitude towards Jose Weezer, of course, and everyone who played a part in putting together this wonderful event, and of course, the City of Los Angeles for extending their welcoming embrace. My family and I recently moved from Mexico City to downtown Los Angeles because of a dream and art. Art is important to our family and this community. If you believe in what you do, dream of it, and want to celebrate it, there is no place in the world like Los Angeles to further this tradition that speaks the same language universally. Soon after the City of Los Angeles welcomed my family's residency, I was cast in the TV series Divas Maids for ABC Lifetime and the feature film Elsa and Fred alongside Shirley MacLaine and Christopher Plummer. The City of Los Angeles embraces a diverse community of people that help the entertainment arts thrive. We are proud to call this city our home away from home. I have such appreciation for today and this tribute. I'm thrilled to be recognized by this beautiful city, the people who have made us feel at home, and the amazing opportunity it has brought to my family. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, thank you very much.
This is his beautiful daughter, who is very active in clapping here. Elena? She's been trained, she's been trained to clap. Jaime says she's been trained to clap for his dad. And his wife Heidi, welcome to the City of Angels. As you mentioned, we have a diverse city, and also in downtown Los Angeles, a strong artistic movement in the Arts District where it was really the pioneering area where people settled and we started to live in downtown L.A. That's the first area people started to live again in downtown L.A. Now people live all over downtown L.A. So thank you so much, and congratulations.
Very good, Mr. Weezer, thank you very much. Another great hand, beautiful family, new residents. Now I'd like to call on the president of the city council, Mr. Herb Wesson, for a special presentation. I called you. Thank you, Mr. President and members. I'd like to bring up the senior lead officer for Wilshire, Spiro Roditis, and Mr. Security Officer, Mr. Jorge Hernandez, to come up. I just, this is a very interesting story. Mr. Hernandez is a security officer in an area that's located in the 10th District. Washington, it's the Washington Market, right? Mr. Hernandez, I go there from time to time because I like their butcher shop, they have good. So I probably have seen you before, but it was brought to my attention that our senior lead officer, and I hope, hopefully, Officer Roditis, you'll explain this connection. Now, every day you might read that there's some, let's say, non-sworn personnel helps a police officer do something, and I think that that's great when normal citizens step up and help law enforcement, because law enforcement puts their lives on the line for us on a daily basis. So it makes you feel good when a person who's not a police officer, but a security officer jumps in and helps the officer. It is my understanding that together they helped arrest individuals who had committed murder. And that alone would be worth bringing them to the chambers. But I believe that they're kind of like Batman and Robin. They have formed this partnership because they did it again. And just a few months ago, in 2012, I think they were able to arrest some suspects that had committed robbery in the sheriff's jurisdiction, but they fled to the 10th District. So what I'd like to do is to present to these two fine men accommodation from the City of Los Angeles. The one, Officer Roditis, is my senior lead officer. So I have to kiss up to him, Mr. Zine, because I may need him when I'm driving down the street and somebody is trying to jump on the little fella here. I need to have my senior lead officer at my side. And when I go into my favorite butcher shop and I get my quarter-inch slice bologna, they have great bologna. I agree. And when I have a youth flashback, I like a fried bologna sandwich. But these are good men that work in the district that I'm blessed to represent. If I could have the presentations, I'd like to present them. And if you guys could join me in giving them a round of applause that they deserve. Mr. Wesson? Chief, you snuck in. And you were in your civvies, so I, anyway.
We actually have a presentation that Chief Beck will be giving Mr. Hernandez later, but I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you for your partnership. Officer Roditis, on more than one occasion, talked about the times that Mr. Hernandez jumped in and was a good partner to him in really extreme circumstances. And we always hope that citizens will do that, and we caution them in many times to just be good witnesses. But Mr. Hernandez went above and beyond the call of duty to help Officer Roditis. And in two separate occasions, we brought a murder suspect and a robbery suspect, carjack suspect, actually, into custody. So I just want to thank him for his partnership, and I know that he's been a good friend to all of us, and I think we owe him. all of us, and I think we owe him. We're eternally grateful for, as should the citizens of Los Angeles, be eternally grateful for his partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And Officer Roditis, I want you to know, where's Big John? Big John gave me the wrong pronunciation of that name. Again. I should have known. John and I go back almost 20 years, and he's a good, loyal, hard-working guy, but when it comes to names, I should have known that. That's not even your fault, that's mine. Ladies and gentlemen, Officer Roditis.
Well, I just wanted to thank Mr. Hernandez and President Wesson here for doing this, because I really appreciate the help that Mr. Hernandez offered me in a time when it was a pretty stressful situation the first time, and he came to... He stepped up the second time, so I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Herna... Oh, wait, 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 I'm sorry.
Mr. Hernandez, it's good.
Okay, it's okay. Mr. Hernandez.
Good morning, everyone. I want to thank you, Mr. Reyes also, and also the city of Los Angeles for this surprise. How do you know about this? Thank you again.
Mr. Wesson.
Yes, sir.
Some of the city's councils finest, Mr. Zine and Mr. Buscayino, want to say a few words. Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. I just wanted to acknowledge the teamwork that took place in this to get citizen participation, which is the key. You have a senior lead officer, which is the individual from LAPD that's responsible for that community. Obviously, he's protected you, Mr. Wesson, because you haven't gotten in trouble, haven't seen a headline on you lately, so that's good. And the lieutenant, who I've known for so many years, going to complete 45 years of service. If you look at the hash marks on Lieutenant Nick's arm, I mean, that shows commitment, dedication to the people of the great city of Los Angeles and to the command staff that's there. But Mr. Hernandez, coming in partnership is what it's all about. The partnership is what the LAPD strives for, and to see this type of recognition by our council president to you, to our senior lead officer, is... It warms the heart to say, we're making improvements, we're working together, we're enhancing the safety of the community. So to all of you, congratulations. It's good to see the command staff here, to see them supporting the folks that are doing the job every single day. So Chief Commander Lieutenant Nick, I know you're going to retire soon. We'll have you back here for the retirement ceremony, but to see that many hash marks on an individual really shows dedication, commitment to the people of Los Angeles. So to all of you, a great, great 2013. Thank you very much.
Very good, Lieutenant. Mr. Buscayino.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. I too want to rise and thank Council President Wesson for acknowledging the success here between the relations between the police department and the business community and security officers across the city. But as a former senior lead officer, I know the importance of fostering better relationships with the business community of residents. And Officer Roditis, I want to thank you for your dedication, commitment to service. And I've always said, it takes a certain breed to be a senior lead officer, but Officer Roditis, obviously, it's evident that you get the importance of building that relationship and problem-solving. And the beauty of this relationship between Mr. Hernandez and Officer Roditis is you guys already had a working relationship, and it's a testament to Officer Roditis's commitment to service. So we want to thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Thank you. As much as L.A. police officers want to be on every street corner 24/7, we just cannot. And to step up, Mr. Hernandez, and work with the police department and be a part of this incident, we thank you, and we acknowledge you, and we thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. Thank you. Big hand for these two fine individuals here. Mr. Clerk, now we're going to go back from presentations, if we could. No more presentations, we're complete with that. Let's go to item number six. We have one public comment call, Mr. Walsh. Item six.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, a motion is required for item number six, and if I may remind, council may only approve or disapprove this item.
Very good.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, and go to my other co-blogging spot, The Front Page Online. This concerns the appointment of Ms. Shashi Khanaman. I see she's not up here. I just want... This is number six. Excuse me, this is number six. You skipped number five. This is number six. This concerns the half-cent transaction and use tax measure. I'm asking you to remove it from the ballot. This is her beside. We call this... This is Herb Wesson's baby, and Herb Wesson's baby is going to drown all of us. Another half-cent sales tax, right, left, and center. Even little Ricky Garcetti won't approve this tax. We want the tax, half-cent sales tax. We just voted another quarter percent sales tax. Vote this half-cent sales tax more and more for the cops, the cops who rape women. Look at the front page of the L.A. Times. More rapists, one minute, finish.
That completes the public comment. Members, the items before us, I got to move it and ask Mr. Kokorian. Second, Mr. Kokorian. Thank you.
Mr. President, for clarification, that would be a motion to approve the matter.
Absolutely.
Very good, sir.
Thank you. A motion to approve. So CDO members to speak. Thank the work of the Legislative Analyst Office. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay. Next item will be item number 10. Mr. Walsh.
Mr. President, it's item 10, called Special for Cards.
This is my second minute. John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org, or go to MayorSam... MayorSam, or go to The Front Page Online. Now, or go to anybody but Garcetti for mayor. This concerns Hollywood and tree trimming. The trees are a mess. Incidentally, this year, we had absolutely no Christmas decorations. You put some colored lights on the trees. And I tell you what, the trees are so big, it gives the rapists a better opportunity. As you know, we've had gang rapes, and I have asked... Ladies and gentlemen, you have heard me month after month after month, asking for a meeting on the rapes in the city, in L.A. and Hollywood. And Garcetti will not meet with us in Hollywood. I've been there since 1976. He doesn't consider it a problem. That's maybe because Ms. Gramala, the captain, had two rapists in her... Cops on the front page of the L.A. Times. And I want to say to you, if you come to Hollywood and see a cop, that cop may rape you if you're a woman, which happened before, and he got away with it. And that's why I'm asking you now. 5% increase in rapes in Hollywood, and the garbage named Devon Maharaj, who's the editor of the L.A. Times, doesn't think it's important. Well, we know about Indian men and rape. That's why millions of Indian women are screaming and yelling. And we say, he's not an Indian. Well, how many passports does Devon Maharaj have? Come to Hollywood. It's dangerous, and the women are being raped are Hispanics. I'll tell you why I am... And they're not white women. Of course, one white woman was raped on Melrose, it was a big story. And why aren't they black women? Because black women are not...
Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, if you want to meet, we can meet at 6501 Fountain at the Hollywood City Hall. Mr. Walsh. Let's call item number three up. All right, open the roll on this item. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
So ordered. Item number three, no cards.
Item number three, called Special for Councilmember Alarcon.
But that's okay, we got the matter before us now. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
So ordered. Next item will be item number 11. Public comment cards are here. Item 11. Dr. Walsh? Excuse me. I know you're not a doctor either. Dr. Williams? Dr. Williams and Arnold Sacks for public comment. Thank you. Number 11.
Number 11. Dr. Tom Williams, L.A. 32 Neighborhood Council, also participant in Highland Park Neighborhood Council and Royal Seaco Neighborhood Councils. Why wasn't this ever circulated with the neighborhood councils and a community impact statement? Today, we had a meeting with the planning department, and they have to revise their drawings and a few other things regarding another project because the local residents participated in it through the neighborhood councils. This one had no vetting by the neighborhood councils, and how many people along Avenue 50 actually participated in developing what was going to go on sometime before Sunday of this month, the last Sunday of this month? So we're trying to get the neighborhood councils to help, but when the city, public works, water and power, planning, don't consult with the neighborhood councils, it's very difficult to encourage neighborhood council participation. So we'd like to have another viewing of this project by the neighborhood council, Royal Seaco, and Highland Park. Thank you.
Arnold Sacks.
Good morning. Thank you. Arnold Sacks. $50,000 in street furniture revenue fund. I believe... Who's the new council member? Great. I believe that the city council was, at one time, a couple of weeks ago, going to consider a study, spending $10 million to inventory the state of the sidewalks in L.A., and that was voted down. So you're spending $50,000 in street revenue furniture funding. That $10 million, where's that? What's that study money going to be used for? How about maybe $50,000 to study the sidewalks and $10 million to repair the sidewalks? Let's see if you can swallow that idea.
Completes the public comment. No speakers on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Ten ayes. And Mr. Clerk, we have a commissioner here today, is that correct?
Mr. Labonge? Yes, sir. Hold on, hold on, Mr. Clerk. If we could, item number 14, forthwith, please.
Item number 14, forthwith.
Thank you.
Sorry, withdraw the 14. Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Clerk, ours...
Item number five, called Special for Cards.
Good. Do we have the commissioner present on this one here? Yeah, okay, good. Cards, let's have Daniel Jones, followed by Mr. Walsh.
My name is Daniel Jones. First of all, I'd like to give my condolences to the families back east. It is a tragedy, and we will learn from it. I'm against this proposal for not any personal reasons. This lady, or, excuse me, this person's management style is to drive the real estate investors who participate in this affordable housing market to leave. Her abrasive mismanagement ineptitude, basically, she's not standing here, is to drive middle-class real estate investors out of the Los Angeles affordable housing market by pissing them off. Red tape bureaucracy. The investment they're going to make is nil or zero. Affordable housing, the mayors want to drive it out. That's why this appointment should be disapproved, because apparently, he all testified, the number man, number two person, was a yes person. That's a good thing, because he said yes to the people who want to invest in this community, and he made it work. He was here to speak for himself. Where is she at? We're going to put this on the codex. It deals with this California State Constitution. It's all about me. You're going to learn the hard way. My parents are still right. They're not on this planet anymore, and I am. That's the way it works.
Mr. President, he's stopped talking about this.
All right, then, he's had stopped. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. John Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, go to... Or Front Page, The Front Page Online.
He's not talking about this item.
I am introducing myself.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. Please proceed. Thank you so much.
Are you running the meeting?
Yes, I am. I'm running the meeting. He interrupted.
Now, on this issue of affordable housing, I ask you to pick up a copy of the L.A. Weekly Hollywood's Urban Cleansing, 12,878 Mostly Latino Residents Vanished, Pushed Out by City Hall. And you're going to appoint this person? High Rents and Hipsters by Patrick Range McDonald. You are doing nothing but gentrifying. Affordable housing? There is no affordable housing. This is the story to read. You can read it online, and this person doesn't even... It's already fixed. She's in. Shashi is in. You're just a rubber stamp. Bring back Herb Wesson. Put away the cigarette, Herb. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Walsh, thank you. Mr. Arnold Sacks. Arnold Sacks from Lenox, California.
Thank you, Arnold Sacks. I would take this opportunity, based on what I was written in and what was the council action of last month, to finally have a definition of what affordable housing is. You know, you took an action last month while you were in Van Nuys regarding the Grand Avenue Project, which essentially is supposed to be 230 million-dollar hotel towers or residential towers that will include affordable housing, or a portion of those units will be designated as affordable housing. So I'm trying to put my embrace, what affordable housing is in a $30 million tower, because you get affordable housing in Skid Row, they're not building $30 million towers. Then you get an affordable housing at the Grand Avenue Project. Who's affordable? And what's the definition? So again, you have affordable, merely affordable, unaffordable, overaffordable. Who gives a rat? I mean, a tit. So maybe when you have this commissioner come in, or maybe you could take the lead, because we know how well you lead, to prescribe definitions so that people know when they're being beaten down, what they're beaten out of. Affordable housing indeed. Is it affordable housing based on a $30 million tower? Or is it affordable housing based on something built in Skid Row? Well, we don't know, but it's affordable if you can afford it.
Thank you very much. There's no other public comments calls. We'd like the designee to come to the center table, please, and... Thank you so much for your interest and commitment to serving at this time. Please give us a brief passion of why you'd like to serve the city of Los Angeles.
Okay. My name is Shashi Hanaman. I am an attorney at Public Counsel, which is the nation's largest pro bono law firm. We specialize in providing legal services to low-income communities. And the reason that I would like to serve on the Affordable Housing Commission is because I'm close to and have a good picture of what the needs are of the lowest-income folks in the city, and I'd like to bring that to bear in the advisory role that the Affordable Housing Commission plays.
Well, thank you very much for your passion, and we know what public counsel has done historically, so we appreciate it. There's no members on the queue. Mr. Clerk, you could open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
So ordered. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you. Proceed with the processing. Next item, please, item number 12.
Item number 12, called Special for Cards.
John Walsh. You have one minute, Mr. Walsh.
I prefer a... I prefer a chairman that was not --
Mr. Walsh, please address the issue. Thank you.
Well, you're not the chairman. HollywoodHighlands.org, for identification purposes only, front page, online. And this is item 12. Again, this concerns Highland Avenue in Hollywood. I just want you to understand, an alley's, if you meet an LAPD officer in that alley --
Hey, Mr. City Attorney, will you please address this here on this issue?
He is not referring to the street vacation matter.
Mr. Walsh, you're not addressing the street issue.
It's dangerous. What am I supposed to say? What garbage you --
Thank you very much. Mr. Sergeant of Arms, please tell Mr. Walsh to have a nicer day in the future, especially when he comes into these chambers. There's no other speakers on this queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
Good. Mitch, I want to call on you to introduce a great group of young people here. Troop, he's got to get it right now. We're just going to get it in it right now.
Boy Scout Troop 104 from Granada Hills is here in council chambers.
All right, 104, stand up, 104. Stand up.
Stand up, guys.
Stand up.
All right. These are guys that are involved in the community. They partner often with cleanups. They get involved and help out. They're being our future leaders, and they've come here for the first time to the Los Angeles City Council. We wanted to welcome you here and wish you a Happy New Year. Hats off to you.
Thank you very much, Scouts. I was a Scout Troop 527. All right. Thank you very much. I only made it to life, but keep going there. Thank you very much. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
That brings us to item 14, called "Special for Cards."
We have item 14 here, and Antonia Ramirez, Doug Haynes, and John Walsh. We note your call. Mr. Walsh, your time has expired.
Instead of installing street banners and recognizing the safety on Sunset Campaign bull crap propaganda and wasting inordinate taxpayers' money, I said taxpayers' money, not your money. Fire 99% of your corrupted Hispanic, Latino, racist, dirty, rogue, rent-a-cop bullies and hire --
Mr. President, he's not, she's not addressing this item.
I want the City Attorney's help on that, because every time I interrupt, hold her time. Hold her time. Mr. City Attorney, I want you to help me. When someone speaks where they shouldn't speak appropriately, you've got to help give us guidance, okay?
You should speak appropriately and not censor. Again, this goes right to the core, an issue of this agenda item. How much are you getting, LaBange?
Mr. President, if the speaker is not addressing an item and her remarks are not germane to the item, and she can be determined to be disruptive and asked to discontinue.
Please speak to the item only. Thank you. Proceed.
Again, you're not hiring integrity of military veterans who have honor, courage, loyalty, due diligence, highly disciplined, brave, and have great camaraderie.
She still is not talking about this street banner campaign.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming down and commenting. You've completed your comments. You're off topic. Doug Haynes, Doug Haynes, from East Hollywood Neighborhood Council. No Doug Haynes is present. No other speaker on the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
10 eyes. Next item. Mr. Zine.
Request of Councilmember Roosevelt, forthwith on item 14.
Fourthwith on 14. Next item.
That brings us to item 15, called "Special for Cards."
Arnold Sacks.
Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. Transfer appropriate, $90,000 from the AB 1290 Fund. The AB 1290 Fund. Today's agenda has you spending $740,000 in AB 1290 Funds. So, what is the balance in that account? Because we hear a lot in council how the budgets get balanced, and the accounts get balanced, and money is taken from one account to the other, but we don't hear about accounts closing up. And since AB 1290 Funds basically are funded by the redevelopment act that was discontinued by the governor, somewhere along the line, the AB 1290 Funds should be drying up. What's the balance? Does the public have the right to know that? It's property tax from the people who, the public, pay this property tax to the state and its return to the city. And how it's used, that's anybody's guess. But again, we're talking about the right to know. We're using this to tree, trim trees. And there was just a story, oh, last year, regarding around about the time you decided about that $10 million sidewalk study, that the Public Safety Department, the firemen, were concerned about trees that are overgrown in the streets so that their equipment couldn't get by. So, again, you've got $50,000 to spend on sidewalk improvement for AB 1290 Funds. You've got $90,000 to spend for tree trimming with AB 1290 Funds. You took $1 million in AB 1290 Funds in your last meeting to save positions for the LAPD.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sacks. We appreciate it. You could visit my office or any office to find out how we directly improve the community with those 1290 Funds when you come in from Lenox. Thank you very much. Any other items on this? No other speakers on the queue? So, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
Next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number 16.
16. Thank you very much, members. Can I just make a friendly amendment? We did get the information. Okay. On this matter, Mr. Clerk, that we should not exceed $2,000 per reward per incident if that leads to conviction on copper wire theft, and amend that it reflect a one-year offer of the reward as opposed to a six-month. Additional, that the reward must be paid out of the Street Lighting Maintenance Assessment Fund. Street lighting is there 100% of the time. That's a friendly amendment.
Actually, pursuant to administrative code, it's written in by ordinance that it's a six-month, so it has to be renewed every six months.
All right. Well, then, we'll read it.
But I'll go ahead and accept that friendly amendment as well.
Accept the friendly amendment. You have that, Mr. Clerk? Good. So, let's amend it. So, let's open the roll on that. Is that right now, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
10 eyes. Thank you very much for going forthwith. We thank Ed, Abraham, and team, all the street lighting people for that. There has been a copper wire rash of thefts. This will hope curb that. Thank you, Ed, and all your team out there on Santa Monica Boulevard. Next item.
That brings us to item 19, called "Special for Cards."
Dr. Tom Williams, we wish you a Happy New Year. Thank you on that. We have a card here from Ms. Ramirez. To the issue, please.
How dare you, councilmembers, Jan Perry and Ed P. Reyes. However, it doesn't surprise me, Councilman Ed Reyes. I know you're a gangbanger in a suit, like Villarreal, Gosa, Wizard, Cardenas, Richard Alarcón, and you're celebrating and recognizing international migrant criminal illegal felons and diabolical criminal gangbanging deviants who are nothing more than thieves. No wonder we have an epidemic of violent gangbangers and criminal illegal felons, thanks to Jan Perry and our gangbanger in a suit and LAPD Patsy, Chief Charlie Beck. So, I say lick it and lick it good, yet none of you politicos have acknowledged, recognized, nor awarded, or helped house our honorable, brave, and legal United States military veterans, whether they are uniformed or ununiformed, active or inactive, nor have you awarded or recognized our law enforcement and medical emergency kick-ass chopper pilots who bust their butts night and day to keep us safe and protected. L.A. City needs the Honorable Governor of Arizona, John Brewer, and Honorable Governor ex-marine boy, Pete Wilson, and the Honorable Joe Sheriff, Joe Arpaio. And again, I'm not making any money under the table. I come here to dissent, and I am not a butt kisser. Again, many of you are making money under the table. This is not about money. It's about principle. City attorneys, start learning ethics. Same with you, Tom LaBange, and all the other butt kissers.
Mr. President, she is not talking about this item.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Good day. Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just enlighten some of the comments that we've heard today. I just wanted to ask the City Attorney a question. We have full opportunity for public comment before the City Council, and of course, we have rights that are protected by the Constitution of Free Speech. Mr. City Attorney, when a speaker comes to the podium and makes profane comments and uses racist, bigoted language, and uses profanity, and otherwise speaks in ways that would be unacceptable in any other social setting, is there anything that the City Council can do to restrict the speaker's ability to use language like that?
Under the Ninth Circuit pursuant to the Norris case and the Downey case and the Santa Monica case, that the bottom line is whether the comments were sufficient conduct which disrupted the meeting.
Right. So, and the reason I ask that --
And the Ninth Circuit actually says there has to be an actual disruption.
Right. So, the reason I ask that question, Mr. City Attorney, is I want to make sure that the public who's watching on television at home, the public who comes here to actually conduct the city's business and sits in our chamber, understands that when we don't stop a speaker from using profane language and from using racist language and from making libelous and outrageous claims against members of this council, it's not because we agree with those things, it's not because we find it acceptable, it's really just because the public who comes to this microphone has the right to say whatever outrageous, ridiculous thing they want to say, and those are protected rights under the law. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Krikor. We have 19 in front of us. Mr. Clerk, there's no speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
Thank you very much. So ordered. Next item.
Mr. President, before moving on, there's been a request to reconsider item number four. It was continued to a future date and continue it to an alternative date.
Thank you. Let's open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
Okay, let's reconsider that item.
And, Mr. President, for the record, that would be to continue this matter to March 19th.
March 19th.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
So ordered. Mr. Wezar.
Item 3, forthwith, please.
Say it again?
Item 3, forthwith, please.
Item 3, forthwith. Thank you very much on that. Thank you very much. Does this bring us to public comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Daniel Jones, come on up here. John Walsh has completed his public comment. John, you can still speak general public comment. I made an error.
Good morning. My name is Daniel Jordan Jones. I appreciate the councilmembers reaffirming, but I believe it's very important. There's a lot of things that happen in this chambers, and one of them is when Herb Wesson said six weeks ago, "I'll be right here, sitting in that chair." Why isn't he sitting in that chair, Mr. LaBange, when I'm at the queue? Because I can't lay a legal accusation of it. Well, we'll get to that later. You can stack the deck all you want, Mr. Wesson. You can make 10 items, snap, crackle, popper. You can sit there and make special items all day long. You can drown me out, wake me out. I'll sit back here all day long. But it happens then, there's nobody in here, this chamber, to hear you, there's nobody in here to hear me. Or you can ship the public comments to the front and get me out of here. Then everybody in this room can hear me. What do you want to do? It works into my favor. It all does. I'm trying to be helpful here. I'm walking in the door, I'm having my grievance redressed like I'm supposed to. It's the only thing I'm allowed to do. I know I'm only one person. And I don't really care if you take me seriously. I don't take myself seriously. I have a sense of humor. All I care about is the public. And the court of public opinion, I am the last one to find out that I'm the court jester and everything that goes along with it. I didn't ask for that responsibility my parents did when they had me. If my mother was here right now, she'd walk right up to this corporal and tell you, "Better not miss," as she never did, and tell, "Mr. Wesson, this concerns you. Mr. Wesson, your wife would be outside." Why? Because my mom would have had lunch with your wife two weeks ago. How long you wait, her wait outside in that city hall?
Mr. President, his personal comments are not within the jurisdiction of this council.
Conclude your comments, Mr. Walsh.
I am.
All right. Thank you very much. Have a good day. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is what, front page, online, for identification purposes, this is what it looks like. Go there, so they can tell the power of the people who watch this. Because I want you to understand, if this wasn't on television, or if we were in another country, I'd be taken out, shot. And in certain countries, I, my family would be murdered. Yes, I have a right to call you crooks, and this is the only country in the world. That's why everyone wants to come here, because you think so.
I have a right to ask you not to yell, so please, you can call me if you want.
See, now I'm on topic, but I'm too loud. Nothing about volume in the First Amendment. Why don't you run the meeting, Herb? You're sober. Rape up 5%. Read what we have here on front page, online. Partying with Sheen in Mexico knocks Villarreal out of inauguration. Yes, Obama has told the mayor he is not going to be at the inauguration, because Ganzo, the hotel that the mayor was getting his free drugs at and his free sex at and got his picture taken, is owned by the Zetas. Zetas Drug Cartel. Everybody knows that. And I'm asked, I've asked the IG of LAPD, where were the contingent of bodyguards for the mayor while he was getting high? Do you see in the picture, he's got his tie off? That's because the prostitute who gave him oral sex.
Hey, 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 Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, I understand that, but you're talking about something that's online in your hand.
Wake up. You're meeting, Herb.
Mr. Walsh, I'm running the meeting at the moment. Thank you very much.
I'm telling you right now, the mayor is, should be removed.
Thank you. I know.
HollywoodHighlands.org. Where are you, Herb? You let the white man run this thing.
Hey, hey, hey. Mr. Walsh. Sergeant, would you escort Mr. Walsh out? Tell him to have a nice weekend, but try to behave a little better. Ms. Ramirez, public comment. Ms. Ramirez. Oh, Mr. Walsh, you're, yeah, out of the meeting, out of the John Farrow Chambers. Escort him out of here. He's disrupted the meeting. Ms. Ramirez.
And for the record, he is continuing to yell out as the next speaker is being called up.
Public comments. Recall, 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 the L.A. City Attorney, Tom LaBange, Herb Wesson, Ed Reyes, Richard Alarcón, Jose Wezar, and Paul Krikorian, and all the others who are the Patsies. To the LAPD, enforce the rule of law. Case in point, your corrupted Rampart stations are 99% all criminal illegal chango gangbangers in uniform who commit obstruction of justice, chango monopolies, and criminal racketeering under the RICO statutes, as are many of your councilmembers, and Paul Krikorian, who gets his moods every now and then. One day, he'll censor you, and the next month, he won't. So, but again, these are, they're committing crimes like the racketeering, they're aiding and abetting violent criminal empire. As such, the wicked slumlord, Francis G. Smith, and her co-conspirator, property management Gary Canos, income property, who illegally hire and illegally house violent and combative criminal illegal aliens, i.e. Santiago, Carmen, Roberto, Alicia, apartment number 414, and Vicki Coomer, apartment number 202, who conspire with surrounding gangbanger felons at the following slum areas, and they are in the surrounding area of Third and Lucas, and several of the apartments, 665, 675, Lucas Avenue, and on Third Street. So, again, many of these apartments are slum, slum areas with intoxicating gangbangers and criminal illegal aliens. And again, your LAPD are non-responsive. Hire military veterans who will enforce the rule of law. Thank you. Thank you so much. And again, Labange, I'm not the butt kisser for crying out loud. Help me enforce the rule of law in America like Jan Brewer is, like Alan Mansour, like Sheriff Arpaio, like.
Thank you very much. Now we have Mr. Jackson. No, Mickey Jackson, Ms. Jackson. I'm sorry, Mickey Jackson, I didn't see that there. And followed by Mark Ray McGrath.
Good morning. Yes, I'm still me, but you know, you never know. I keep reading in the paper that we all change more than we think we will over the years. I'm here because I'm very concerned about an ordinance that was adopted almost a year ago for the enforcement of the use of condoms and making of adult films. That is still not being enforced. We don't have the proper things done about it. Everybody, you know, meetings get canceled. This has become a hot potato and it's being thrown between the council, Mr. Santana's office, and the city attorney. And we get different stories from each one of them. There's different proposals from each one of them. It goes back and forth, back and forth, and the bottom line is nothing has been done. Now, we have been really patient. A year, I think qualifies for really patient. And still no enforcement. Mr. Santana did make something of a suggestion at a meeting that perhaps there could be a cessation of issuing permits for adult films if they do not have the required health permit from the county. We thought that was a very good idea. We scheduled a meeting to try to follow up on it and guess what? It was canceled. So, we're just getting too many stories. They're fine fast and furious. We need to get some clarity. This thing needs to have a straight line to enforcement. You know, you adopted it, people voted for something very similar in great numbers at the county, and now we simply need to get this show on the road.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Mark McGrath. I'm with AIDS Healthcare Foundation. We are the world's largest nonprofit for AIDS healthcare and we provide medicines to 187,000 people regardless of ability to pay. I was a proponent of a city initiative that this August Board passed to require the issuance of film permits on access and use of condoms. However, it's been a year and I believe the city attorney and the CAO have obfuscated and have been obtuse on this issue and we have gotten nowhere on what should be relatively easy enforcement. I was also a proponent on a countywide initiative that one-handedly, and it's quite clear that we have the electorate on our side on this issue and it's quite clear that the citizens of both Los Angeles and Los Angeles County see this as a matter-of-fact issue. We are hoping that this August Board will take some action and motivate both the city attorney and the CAO to move forward with implementation of what is now a city ordinance. As it stands, they have come up with ridiculous machinations. The CAO came up with a ridiculous Joy Division Fire Department estimate that just is mind-boggling. So we ask this August Board once again, Tom, we ask you once again to motivate these other government agencies. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comment. Dr. Tom Williams, last public comment card.
Dr. Tom Williams, LA 32 Neighborhood Council, Els Reno, 30-year resident here. Freedom of speech, we were just discussing it. It's the most important element we have and the state of California has even a better one. Public comment. Go to any other state and try to find a public comment. Public comments are the key to a free, informed society that can make intelligent decisions in March. However, we also can comment on almost anything. I commented maybe four months ago that over 2,000 people have been killed in Syria. Now it's 46. And what did we say about it? Nothing. We complain about apartheid, we complain about Arizona, but nothing was done about Syria. So, wash. Now, coming back to a more important element, we just approved $50,000 for the conviction of a murderer of a Los Angelino. $50,000 could be spent. What are we going to spend to save the deputy sheriff in San Bernardino County from cancer? Bone marrow. That's all. All he needs is a good match on bone marrow. We're the city of immigrants, migrants. We're going to have one day for celebrating that. But here's a problem, real time. Kaiser Permanente in San Bernardino has a guy that needs a bone marrow transplant. We have over 20,000 people registered with Kaiser Permanente as employees of the city of Los Angeles. Can't we get them on the bone marrow donor list?
Thank you very much, Dr. Williams. Arnold Sacks. This is our last public comment card. I don't have no other cards at this time.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. I didn't even realize there was a meeting going on. I certainly appreciate you, Councilman Krikorian, laying down some ground rules. And I do appreciate the fact that some people get caught up in, I don't know, wildly abusive banter. So, Mr. City Attorney, just out of curiosity, because you explain what and what cannot happen according to the rules, what standing do we have on this side when a councilman gets up and blatantly lies to the public? Is there any remedial action that can be taken other than having them thrown out? I mean, there's politicians that get caught up in legal cases, takes two years to go to court. Two years, they sit for four, so they basically sit through their term. What do we have to go? We heard, we don't even have to hear, all you have to do is pick up the agenda. The second name listed here for the president pro tem sat on an agency that didn't even exist. There's documentation. You deal with Southern California area governance, you spend money to sit on that council and they put him on this agency and nobody from the council spoke up. And now he's back on the agency after it was approved by state legislation. But what happened prior? It's got public funding. It's got public property. Who's moving on that from the council? Oh, and by the way, Measure R, the billion plus, billion three generated by the mayor, $550,000, 650,000.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sacks. You completed your comments. Have a good weekend. That is completed our public comment. We thank you. Mr. City Attorney, would you just check for me one time? Because I think Dr. Williams made a great comment about how important public comment is. What if public comment was one minute as opposed to two? You let me know in the next meeting, I'd like to know about that. So there's concise public comment from that. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, anything before us?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
So ordered.
There is an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Garcetti requests to leave early on January 11th.
So ordered on the 11th of January, Mr. Garcetti.
The desk is clear.
Desk is clear. We have an announcement, I want to make a great announcement. City of Los Angeles float in the 123rd Rose Parade won the Mayor's Cup, the Mayor's trophy for that great rose parade that celebrated the great work that's being done at Los Angeles International Airport as well as our sister city program and welcome people from around the world to Los Angeles. So we want to thank the Los Angeles Tourist Board for their leadership on that float as well as all those who volunteered for that great special float. Do you see that, Betsy? That was beautiful float. Any other announcements? Joe Buscayino, the great councilman of the 50th district, you got a big thing at Warner Grand tonight, I think.
We do, yes.
Who's coming down there?
Ms. Godolph will be there along with Betty White.
Betty White. Tickets are available, just come to the Warner Grand.
Straight to the Warner Grand.
Support the Warner Grand.
Downtown San Pedro.
Joe.
In addition, thank you, Ms. Labange. I want to officially recognize and thank Rudy Rios for spending the day, he's councilman for the day, and his parents, Deanna and Gabriel are here. Thank you for bringing in Rudy, who's been just absorbing how the city works, including the public comment period as well. But nonetheless, we are proud of you, Rudy. We wish you the best and he's nine years old but in going to Crestwood and in the fourth grade. And he's also on the tied baseball team, plays catcher and first base and his coach, Rich Deanna, has done amazing things in San Pedro, so we love him for it. So thanks, Rudy, for joining us. All right, buddy.
Rudy, thank you. And Joe, make sure Rudy gets to see the Tom Bradley Tower. You can look all the way down to San Pedro. Good job. Mr. Garcetti, give me one good announcement, Mr. Garcetti.
There's some great things that are happening all throughout Los Angeles. One of them is unfortunately a sad thing, which I know Mr. Weezer is going to speak about and I'll add my wishes as well, but right now there's a memorial service going on for the mother of Lucille Royball Allard and we will be commemorating her.
God bless her soul. No other announcements? We have adjourned motions. Let's all rise. Sergeants, please help. All rise for adjourned motions. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. It's sad to announce the passing of Lucille Becerra Roybal. She died on December 23rd, just two weeks shy of her 96th birthday. She was the beloved wife of the late US Congress member Edward R. Roybal and former LA city council member as well. And she is the mother of a US Congresswoman, Lucille Royball Allard. And when you reflect on the political brilliance of the Roybal family, the one constant force that many pointed to was Lucille Becerra Roybal. Lucille was a light of inspiration, knowledge, and empowerment to her husband and daughter and really to all of us. As a local newspaper pointed out, as we honor this great woman, we should remember her for her individual accomplishments and not only for those of her husband and her daughter. She was a co-founding member of the community service organization that did much to bring to light the civil rights needs of a growing working class population in the city of Los Angeles and she served as one of the first Latina registrar voters in the city of Los Angeles. A descendant of a California military commander, politician, and ranchero, Mariano Vallejo, Becerra Roybal was born on January 5th, 1917 in Los Angeles to Manuel Albert Becerra and Prudenciana Moreno Becerra. She was a third child of four siblings and was raised in Boyle Heights. Her father was a house painter and her mother was a homemaker. Becerra Roybal was a graduate of Roosevelt High School. She married Edward R. Roybal in September of 1940. Edward and Lucille Roybal had three children, Lucille, Lilian, and Edward Jr. The couple was married for 65 years until Edward's death in 2005. The Roybal family said she instilled in her children the value of education and encouraged academic excellence as well as the value of justice for all. Lucille was a political activist and played an integral leadership role in her husband's Los Angeles City Council and congressional campaigns. She also lent her time, energy, and leadership to various grassroots and community-based causes throughout her life, particularly in the areas related to public health. She served as an outreach representative for the Well Baby Clinic, the Red Cross, and other public health and charitable organizations as well. Her contributions were recognized by the Los Angeles City Council when the council named the Lucille Becerra Roybal Family Source Center in Boyle Heights in her honor, which is a living tribute to one of the truly great Boyle Heights residents who worked to improve the lives of poor and working families in that neighborhood. In 1993 and 1996, the Congressional Hispanic Caucus Institute and MANA, a national Latina advocacy organization, respectively honored Becerra Roybal with their highest award for her tireless dedication to the Latino community in Los Angeles and nationwide. Lucille is remembered as a Latina pioneer, an icon, a visionary, and a true leader of service and someone whose spirit and work has had a lasting effect on the Latino community. I recall a story Congresswoman Royball Allard told about her mother when we dedicated the Mendez Learning Center in Boyle Heights a few years back. Mendez is named after two Latino parents who won a California court case outlawing segregation in schools so their children could get a decent education. Congresswoman Royball Allard became emotional talking about the racism her mother faced while attending a school as a young girl, the openly low expectations some teachers had placed on her solely based on the color of her skin, while also failing to recognize the bright child that sat before them. In her lifetime, Lucille did so much more than overcome the failing of others to recognize her brilliance and keen intellect. She took those expectations, turned them inside out, and rendered them unrecognizable. And by giving of herself to her family and others from a place of utter devotion, love, and support, she helped inspire thousands of others who today are doing the same. And that's why her legacy is truly a living legacy that will continue on. The funeral mass and interment is being held this morning, as Councilmember Garcetti mentioned, at Calvary, Martry Chapel and Cemetery. A reception will follow at Stevens Steakhouse and Seaford House in Commerce. In lieu of flowers, the family has asked that donations be made to the Roybal Foundation. They can be reached at 323-725-3960. Certainly, we lost a great one who not only was a wife and a mother to two great public servants, but a person in her own right did so much. And last night at her wake, several people pointed out that at her time of activism, women weren't really recognized for the leadership and support and work they did in the community. But she was truly one of them and she truly deserves the recognition that some of the others who have gone the spotlight have gone. So on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, Mr. President, I'm sure we want to all join in a journey to today's council meeting in remembrance and recognition of Lucille Becerra Roybal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much and thank you, Mr. Weezer, for that motion. I just wanted to add one or two remembrances. This was an incredible woman. Lucille Becerra was somebody who was responsible as much as anybody for her husband's assent. My grandfather told me stories of what it was like in Boyle Heights in the days when there were certain days that blacks and Mexicans weren't allowed in the pool and how they became the first to really organize, coming from very proud families themselves who had been important leaders in California in the past. They organized the community in a way that was, for my, I think grandfather, his first political experience, I think the number of people that she deputized resulted in something like 10,000 or 15,000 new votes that literally elected her husband. And, you know, when we look at voter registration and we look at the most basic parts of democracy back then, people weren't encouraged to and oftentimes weren't allowed to vote based on the language that they spoke and the color of their skin and other factors. And certainly to be a woman at that time where you had to work too often behind the scenes and in the shadows, she was a great, great, incredible person. And she's somebody who, when my dad first ran, both she and her husband encouraged him, saying this was an important thing, not just for his career but for our city and for our county. And I know my father has always felt greatly indebted to both of them, but what a life, 95 years. It is such an honor to be able to see her name every single day up there at the Family Source Center in Boyle Heights. And I think for many years to come, people will be able to take the legacy that is a living legacy and make sure that there's empowerment for all people in the city. So I ask that you rest in peace. And I have a second adjourned motion unless anybody else wants to chime in on that one.
Proceed.
I'd like to adjourn in memory of Adam Peter Kazarian. We didn't, I don't think, Peter was a friend, a personal friend of mine and I thought we had maybe adjourned, but he passed on November 19th, 2012 at the way, way, way too young age of 48. He was part of the Kazarian clan who, if you know, here in Los Angeles, went to school with his brother Eric Kazarian. It's an incredibly accomplished, incredibly bright group of brothers who have added their expertise in government, in medicine, in so many different ways. But Peter was a friend of mine who I was working with on. But Peter was a friend of mine who I was working with on a number of things to do with our gross receipts tax, and just a friend over the years, and he, he had a heart attack while playing basketball, one of the things he loved to do, and was taken from us. A beloved husband, a brother, an uncle, and a son. Marilyn Kazarian, his mother, is just one of the pillars of the community. But he was a great public servant himself. He attended Harvard High School in North Hollywood. He graduated with honors from Georgetown University School of Public Foreign Service, and he got a law degree from USC, where he was article editors of Law Review. He married Michelle Marie Genigian in 1998, but he worked for many different roles. He worked for Senator Pete Wilson at Georgetown. He was the first intern for the new senator and then worked for him. He chaired the largest model United Nations program in the world while a student, and he volunteered for George Duke Magian's gubernatorial campaign in 1982, was a member of his finance team. And he continued his commitment to public service with Governor Wilson, who appointed him as the general counsel for the California Department of Corporations, which was something extraordinary. He did a lot of work between Armenia and the United States, and also with the Council on Foreign Relations. He was a German Marshall Plan Fellow, just one of our best and one of our brightest, somebody who always had a smile, always had a laugh, always got us to be moving forward, and most recently was working with doctors here in Los Angeles. The corporate, sorry, the Physicians Mutual Protection Trust, the Cooperative American Physicians Mutual Protection Trust, which is a medical malpractice trust, and was just a brilliant mind who was taken from us way too soon. May Peter Kazarian rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Grant Gerson passed away December 6th. Opened the Calamigos Star Sea Ranch in 1947, died December 6th, natural causes. At his home in Agora, he was 92 years of age. Navy veteran who served as an aquatic instructor during World War II, began his career in outdoor education when he worked with the YMCA camp counselor before opening his own covered wagon-themed camp in Beverly Hills. Created the ranch after acquiring 15 and a half acres atop the mountains of what is now the intersection of Canandoon Road and Mahaland Highway, halfway between Malibu and Agora Hills. At the time, the remote site was only reachable by twisting Latigo Canyon Road. The ranch was built to resemble a town in the Old West. Activities were planned to reflect Gerson's five points of fellowship, reverence, loyalty, honesty, self-reliance, and sportsmanship. He frequently partnered with public school systems, conducting day trips to the ranch for children from South Los Angeles, and organizing a pioneering week-long outdoor education program for Los Virginies Unified School District. A memorial service will be held on January 26th, 11:00 a.m. at Calamigos Ranch. Grant is survived by sons and grandsons, survived by a wife, 25 years, Ruth, stepchildren, Susan Morris, Stephen Cronkold, John Gronkold, and four step-grandchildren. I knew Grant. He was quite an individual, quite a character, and the last time I was at the ranch was the wedding for Congressman Brad Sherman. But Grant opened his facilities for many people in the community over the years. Just a wonderful, wonderful man, passed away 92. May he rest in peace, Grant Gerson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. Appreciate that. I'd like to sign that as well. Members, I'd like to ask we adjourn in memory of Gary Squire, who was Mayor Bradley's housing director, then the first director of the Housing Department for the city of Los Angeles. He was 61 years old, and he was, when he first appointed by Mayor Bradley, he was a young guy who had all that great energy and commitment to really focus on housing. And I don't know, Richard, you worked closely with him and heard the news over the holidays of his passing at 61 in a battle with cancer. Also, I'd like to ask we adjourn in memory of Lilian Mahaland Masado, who was one of the granddaughters, the great-granddaughters of the late, great, great chief William Mahaland and the Mahaland family. She was much loved and also was very participatory, like her other sibling who was involved with the history, like Catherine Mahaland was, but Lilian Mahaland Masado. And lastly, I think we should adjourn in memory of John Quimby. John Quimby, a assemblyman, San Bernardino City Councilman, came up with the Park Act, which later brought his name, which what, where would we be without John Quimby? Truly a saint in California and the park development as an assemblyman. So, I think we all should join and adjourn in his memory and blessings to his family. That concludes our first meeting of the year. I want to thank all of you on behalf of Mr. Wesson and wish you all a good day and a good weekend. God bless the city of Los Angeles.